Eventually, we do have the owl up and going, so recordings are in progress. And I'd like to open. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak to school choice? Seeing none. I would like to make a motion that the Plington School Committee not accept the school choice this year because of historically high enrollment figures. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. And now I make a motion to close this school choice hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right. Moving through quickly, I guess. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from our March 24th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Second. Any discussion, any concerns, changes? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. School committee correspondence. None from me. None from the superintendent either. So we're on to number five, which is new business, which is town meeting items. I would like to take an item out of order. I'd like to also have the Director of Finance and Operations report at this time. There's no objection. So, Sarah, the reason why I'm asking for this is just so we have a clear update of what our FY '25 budget deficit looks like, because we had made some moves with some of our rural aid. It looks like we may need to reallocate some of those funds.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just pulling up my notes as...
Take your time. We're going pretty quick.
So, the FY '25 budget analysis spreadsheet that I created back in November for you, or December, I can't remember when I started this, I updated it again this morning. As part of the updating process, it was apparent that the number of long-term leaves had increased, and so now that adds $50,000 approximately to the budget deficit for the year. So if you look on that spreadsheet that I had shared with you, the summary over in columns N, O, and P starts with what the budget, the FY '25 budget, $3,975,000. The budget with the additional expenses, $4,292,783.93. Now making a pre, I had it labeled as a pre-freeze deficit, but the deficit is now $317,783.93. The next number down, $55,814, is projected savings from the budget freeze. So the projected deficit as of today is $261,983.79. So from that, if we add in the tuition from Halifax for extended school year, there was $50,000 of the special ed reserve fund that was approved by the Select Board, $53,608 in excess circuit breaker, $9,135 in potential access to 40 grant, puts us right now at negative $111,377. So my notes from the March, the discussion of the March meeting was that there was $144,000 in rural aid available, and $50,000 of that was going to go to the HVAC project, $54,000 was going to go to the FY '25 deficit, and $40,000 was going to go into the special ed stabilization account in light of the increase in number of long-term leaves. $50,000 should be, an additional $50,000 should be put into FY '25 deficit.
Okay. So it required us to make a vote at that last meeting to put an article in a special town meeting to transfer from the rural aid fund back into our special ed stabilization fund. The other funds that we allocated, the $54,000 towards the FY '25 debt, doesn't require a vote of the town, nor did allocating $50,000 to HVAC, which again was to try and complete earmark funds that we've received from Senator Moran to do one of our rooftop units. I, at this point, don't feel comfortable allocating any of these dollars towards anything except for the debt, because a jump from our March 21st meeting to our April 28th meeting of $62,000 or so leads me a little weary that even if we up it to the current deficit of $111,377, we could end up hitting a couple more bumps in the road along the way.
Well, just to be clear, that number on line 35, the long-term substitutes, that is the amount projected to be paid through June.
Understood.
So that should, unless additional people go out on long-term leave, that...
Right. But you do agree that we went from around $50,000 to around $111,000 since last meeting? My concern, Sarah, is it might not be from that line. We might hit another bump in the road.
Understood.
I have a question of, again, how we encumbered, how we came up with $60,000 in long-term pay for just the last three months of school. Now, these monies that we had spent prior to our last meeting, they just hadn't been accounted for yet, or some of them prior to our last meeting and since our last meeting? It's a combination of those two factors, or are these just long-term leaves since our meeting in March?
I'm gonna have to ask Pete for some help with this, but...
Because Pete, I'm not wrong that a long-term sub in our district gets a bachelor's step one paid typically, right?
Correct.
Which is about how much?
52 of it for an annual.
Okay. So for me to see a 60 number since my last meeting just makes me concerned about how many of my staff are currently out just to cover three months. So it's a big number. I understand things happen. We had good plan for our rural aid money. We still have it there, but we're now not going to be able to get that rooftop unit potential and lose the allocation out from the earmark and the budget loss share, and we're not going to be able to put any money back into our special ed stabilization potential. So I really want to understand where this number came from and how I can prepare for town meeting appropriately.
Based on looking at last month and this month's numbers, only 50 is, there's another 10 somewhere in here.
So only 50 more is for long-term sub, but I'm seeing the difference in about 61 and a half thousand.
It was almost 60,000 at our last meeting, and now it's 109. So that's 50, but there's 10 somewhere else.
Anybody who has any answers, I'd love to hear from. Please feel free to speak.
So for special education, the budget sheet that I have shows a deficit of $28,000. That's without any of the extraordinary relief that we approved of by the state. There's a good hope that they will be more than the 30% that they told us, and that that will offset that, so you won't have any deficit in special education if things stay the way they are right now.
So there is some hope we could wipe out that $28,000 of deficit special ed?
So when I looked through the two sheets, and I keep flipping back, so I could, I must be making a mistake with that, but with everything that's highlighted, the only thing that changed that I can see is the long-term absences by 50. So I just, I don't know where that other 10 comes from, and I still, I agree with you, Jason, I don't understand how it's 50. Because I know the, what, is it one additional? Because I saw the note that was sent out that we had a...
That was part of the information I was gonna share, John.
Yep.
We had Mrs. Slowey, who's been out pretty much the entire year. Mrs. O in fifth grade went out in March. Mrs. Pratt just went out this weekend, and...
Nurse Ryan was out.
Nurse Ryan was out at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year. And we have one more teacher that is anticipated to be out for the last couple weeks of school.
So some of these...
But most of those should have already been in our numbers for March, so that's where...
Clarification of what I was asking. Some of this is funds that we just hadn't updated in March, but had been covered previous and spent previous?
Well, is that... That's how I'm hearing.
Sarah, how does the process work?
I sit down, so to update the spreadsheet, I went into the system that we have, School ERP Pro, and I uploaded around 10 o'clock this morning a spreadsheet of those columns that you see there, which are the 24-25 budget, the FY '25 actuals, which was what was spent as of this morning. Then I go through and I update the obligated column of monies that are set aside for salaries and things that are non-negotiables, giving us that column that I've highlighted, column K, which is the available column. One of the things I noticed as I was updating is in the rows 55 to 85, the items that we were frozen were not necessarily frozen. So there are some expenditures, if you look at those columns, there are some expenditures, the tech equipment repairs and software, things like that. I had had Tech Director Steve Pello go through line by line with me, and he would, we set aside money for him to spend because he knew there was going to be need for that between when he and I spoke in December and then in June. But there are some other lines, for example, I'm just trying to think of what I updated today.
No, but just looking at round numbers here, Sarah, the projected savings from budget freeze only changed by about 1.5K, $1,500. So it still leaves up, between that and the $50,000 increase in the long-term subs, it still leaves about $10,000 that we can't see where it came from on the chart. Because like John said, I did the old-fashioned way, I printed it out and did line-by-line analysis, I couldn't see any discrepancies other than the small amount in the savings from the budget freeze and the amount in the long-term sub. And I guess I'm still, Peter, I'm still a little bit confused about, we pay $52,000 a year for a long-term sub. Have we essentially been running two long-term subs all year long, when you average it all in?
More or less.
Because that would make sense for where this money was coming from.
But then we've been underreporting it in the past, which isn't...
It's not ideal.
It's not not ideal. We can't function this way. I mean, if, like, let's say this happened May 15th.
After town meeting.
That's... I mean, we wouldn't, or, and we met, let's say we already moved on the HVAC. I mean, we wouldn't have the money. You know, so it's, I mean, I agree with you. We can't, we can't obligate those other two sets of funds with where we are right at the moment. But I do think we need clarity as to, so that we can explain back to town why we're not spending as we agreed to spend.
And what I'm, I'm gonna ask for here, you can hear me out on this, is we did want to put $40,000 into the article for special town meeting. I would appreciate a motion to allow me to use the most updated numbers to put any amount that we can possibly put into it by making an amendment on the floor at town.
I will make that motion with a condition that we do the motion first, because you should, we should do that. So I would, I would make that motion.
Okay. Do you have any concerns with that? Will you second the motion? Okay. Any further discussion about that?
Just before we end up putting any money toward a town meeting, we need to clearly understand...
No, I understand that, but if any information comes to light...
Dimes and cents.
And we feel comfortable putting some money, I want to have that authority from the committee to make the motion.
Absolutely. So no additional discussion.
I do think, having been here for a long time, when you, when you look at it, it is about two long-term subs when you sort of look at everybody as a whole.
Yep.
For us to have five different staff members on maternity leave for at least some portion of the school year is kind of unprecedented. I've never seen a year like that. So I think in terms of like explanation as to why we can't sort of allocate, like, this was a very unusual year in that department.
I think the question is, though, is why are we finding out a difference of this amount at this late time?
I mean, if people are out, they're out.
What is it in the process that it's not, it's not getting into the system in a timely fashion?
Yeah. And we've been, and I'll admit it, I'm grumpy about this because it keeps happening. So that, that's, I mean, if people are out, they're out, and we need to cover. I mean, and if it's unforeseen, it's unforeseen. Someone has medical leave, they have to deal with it. It is what it is. It's just that I want to make sure that, you know, we thought we had it under control as of late March, and until early this afternoon, we didn't. You know? And we can't, like, and we've done this in time that we can get it sorted, and we're lucky to have this relief valve. But if this happens after town meeting, the money's not there. You know, if we've allocated it, like, if we've, if we allocate a certain amount because we're all comfortable with the numbers and we allocate it to the special ed, once that is voted, it's done. That money's gone. And we can't, we can't take it back other than to go and tap the money again through the special ed, if it's a special ed expense. So we just have to get tight with these numbers because, you know, we would have, we would have done things differently at last meeting if we had. So, and swings of a one and a half percent of our budget are, I mean, I'm gonna stop.
No, I mean, the idea that we're gonna lose potentially that earmark money, I don't see any way we can make that happen at this point.
No, I agree. I think we do need to evaluate with facilities as to whether there's any work that needs to be done for the HVAC that we could use that money for. I mean, we're not gonna be able to replace a unit, so is there, are there additional maintenance, is there other, you know, whatever, I mean...
That qualifies.
Yes.
Under the language.
Yeah.
I know that they're written quite broadly...
Yeah.
For these exact purposes, so...
But we should, we should look to that, and no, I absolutely agree. This is, this is off the table right now.
Maybe if that $28,000 comes in for special ed and we find out about that, and it's no pressure on you, because we have to wait for DESI, but if it comes in and we don't see anything else, we might be able to put some of that money towards the special ed stabilization. I think that would...
Did we put a number in the article?
Well...
Where's the article?
I proposed to Liz $40,000. I did give her a number. I don't think it was just a placeholder.
Let's, let's ask if it's a sum of money or a placeholder.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if for some reason we end up with, if for some reason we end up with a little bit more, we should put more.
Well, that's why I asked for the ability to make an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, but I remember, what is it? But I think there's a thing you can go down, you can't go up.
You don't have to check the places.
Yeah. But let's, let's see what, let's see what the language is.
And is there some ability to carry over any of those dollars if we do get those $28,000?
The extraordinary relief has to be paid by the end of the year, but what you can do is you can take that money and replace it and just kind of shift it around, and then...
Yeah. Because you get two years for regular circuit breaker. I don't think we took the vote yet.
We did not take the vote.
So, again, the motion was to allow me as the chair to amend our special town meeting article about the amount of money we want to put into the special ed stabilization. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous as we are. All right. Any further questions for Sarah about the FY '25 budget and its deficit? Is there anything else, Sarah, you'd like to bring up in your report so you could be
If you look on the financial report that was presented to you in your digital folders on page three, if you look at the numbers at the top of the page for the electricity and the gas, electricity was budgeted at $65,100 for the year, gas at $29,925. We had a very cold winter, and the gas is currently overspent, but there's going to be a surplus in electricity so that the utilities are gonna balance out within the group. But that's the only thing different on this financial report that we haven't already talked about.
Any further questions for Sarah? Thank you very much, Sarah. I appreciate you allowing us to take that out of the board.
Do we have to accept the report?
We can accept the report.
So I remember that we accept the report of friends.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Report of standing committees. Admin review.
As part of my report tonight, I was going to mention that I have submitted my evidence of goals as well as the standards for the Superintendency rubric to all school committee members, and that is available. Once the admin review committee receives feedback from school committee members, they will schedule an admin review meeting to finalize that and then set a date with me for my evaluation.
Policy. Luckily, we have none today. I'm sure there's some pipeline. Negotiations?
So we have ongoing negotiations with the Plington Teachers Association. Our next meeting with them is in Cinco de Mayo, so on the 5th. We just had a initial meeting with our aides here at the Denit, and we'll have a follow-up meeting on the 13th.
Thank you very much. I mean, I did for Unit 31, was that a joint meeting for evaluation or...
I can't remember if it's just the admin review. It's an open session meeting, but I don't recall that it's a...
Just admin.
Right.
Okay. All right. And PAC, Dan's not here.
So Unit 31, we did have, we had the meeting, the joint meeting, which our dear colleague was the only one from Plington to attend, so we owe her a lot for that, because otherwise there wouldn't have been a meeting, so that, that happened, and then we have a meeting Thursday, right, a virtual meeting to review contract?
Yes. Potential.
Potential contract.
Prime list.
So PAC, like I said, Dan's not here. Capital improvement, capital restorative, but I'll hold on that for right now. Legislative agent, so the House Ways and Means Committee came up with their budget. The good news was they increased the per pupil minimum increment to $150 per student, which is the highest it's ever been. Last year, it was one of four, and that was the highest it had ever been. Typically, we see it about $30 to $60, so they're really pushing on that. Speaker of the House is very reluctant to open up any discussions about Chapter 70 this year because he's scared to death of what's going on in Washington, of a loss of any federal funding would deeply impact the state budget. Unfortunately, he continues not to understand the plight of rural schools, and this House Ways and Means Committee cut the governor's proposal of $16.5 million to $7.5 million. By the way, he did this last year, the host of this last year, the Senate came back and funded it back at the $16.5, working with Senator Conoverford, who's in charge of the Rural Schools Caucus, to see if we can get that push at least back up to level for where we are this year. But don't forget that we had said that we were gonna use rural aid next year to help offset our operating budget here at our last meeting. The good news is the increase of the per pupil almost equally matches the decrease we see in rural aid, so the town will still be able to afford the budget that we passed at last meeting, even with the House version of the budget. You know, Kathy's put in some amendments, some of our friends have put in amendments that will get Plington more money and Silver Lake more money, and we're hopeful those amendments will be adopted in the final House version of the budget. Next week is MASC's Day on the Hill, where we'll be going in to advocate and we'll be pushing strongly on our seven legislators to make sure that they show a little bit more guile in the face of the threats coming at it due to... That's my legislative agent report. Single signature warrants.
You have, there is a warrant circulating for signatures for $207,407.46, which I will deliver to the town for payment tomorrow.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. On to admin. CASA, principal reports. Mr. Vina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We covered a good chunk of what I was going to go over just a few minutes ago, as far as the fact that we've had a lot of people that have been out on maternity leave, and we've been very fortunate to get very qualified people to fill those roles. As Christine mentioned, five people in one year is definitely newsworthy and very unlikely. The last one that we touched upon briefly, sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Pratt, just out of this weekend. Well, and baby, you're doing great, and we do expect Mrs. Medlin in kindergarten to be out before the end of this school year, so we'll be going through that process again and trying to find somebody to cover for kindergarten.
Are her days accounted for in the current budget that was presented to us?
I would need to double-check that.
We do a long-term sub or daily rate through that?
It's long-term.
Long-term.
Okay. Even with 34 days to go?
If I may, part of it is similar to our most recent leave, was unexpected and a lot earlier, so we advertise them as long-term subs because even though we might have anticipated of like the first of the month in June, it could happen either before that or after it. So we advertise it as long-term because it does then get us what we would consider some of the most qualified candidates.
I just appreciate that question.
For sure.
Thank you. As far as other things that are happening here at school, getting toward the end of the school year unbelievably, so we have some exciting things happening. Tomorrow night, we have our all elementary band concert at 6 o'clock, and that's going to be held at Kingston Intermediate School. On Monday, the 5th, we have our kindergarten information night here at 5:30. On Thursday, May 8th, we begin our grade three through six MCAS testing. That's followed by grade five, taking the science, technology, and engineering testing. Thursday, the 15th of May, we will have contributions to the community showcase, which is being housed at the high school, from 5 to 7 o'clock. Something that we've talked about here and there for a number of years, and principal and administration got together, and hopefully we're gonna get a nice representation from each school, and looking forward to that. It's about this time every year, Mr. Chair, that you ask me about potential kindergarten numbers. So far this year, we've had 33 kindergarten students that have at least started the registration process, so I'm gonna use that as kind of a jumping off point for right now. That's always give or take, you know, one, two, three. But 33 people, or 33 students, it's probably a safe number for right now.
So you had put a ballpark out there. I think we used 40 as a placeholder.
Typically, yes.
And that would have put us up to like 261?
Correct.
So we're still gonna be over 250 for next year?
It looks that way, yes.
Okay.
And you usually get students come into the registration process even over the summer?
Absolutely, yes.
So 33 is sort of our floor?
I would say yes. Regardless of the amount of advertising we do, and Mrs. Sanson does a great job with all of that, we do have some people that will come at the end of August and... all of that, we do have some people that will come at the end of August and want to register for kindergarten, so we're certainly not gonna say no. Yeah, thirty-three is right now probably our jumping off point.
And there's some building going on at town again, which we haven't seen that much of in the last couple of years, but there's quite a few spots, so...
I've heard that as well.
Any other questions?
One, one last note, Jason, if I may.
Sorry.
In the packet, I believe it was a number of months ago now, we discussed the importance of having some letters that could be sent out with some immediacy to our families. So, I gathered some information of letters that we've used in years past, I gathered some that Principal Gill has used, I gathered some letters from my own daughter's district just to address some things that are, I don't wanna say very likely to happen, but at least somewhat likely to happen for us at this level. It might be a late bus, it might be there's construction on the roads, and I know that Christine took some time to tweak some of the language of some of the other letters as far as, you know, if something were to happen, get information out to parents as quickly as we can. This is something, it's almost like the Rolodex of incidents, so to speak, and, you know, we hope to never have to use this, but if we need to send something out without recreating the wheel each time, we can go to this and hopefully stay out ahead of any incidents that may be impacting our families, so it's a list that can be added to, taken away from, it's just a good, a good thing to have in our tool belt.
Yeah, it's a fairly macabre Rolodex, however, you know, hearing it from you and hearing it from the Denit, before parents are hearing it from their kids, I think is really the goal.
Absolutely.
What the committee was desiring to see.
Yep.
So, this is definitely a step in the right direction there, and like you said, you can tweak it and amend it to make it more appropriate for our community, for our age-level children, you know? The one that comes to mind for me is when there's a medical emergency and an ambulance comes to the school, and then God knows what the kids are saying when they get home, if you can just say, hey, there was one today.
Yes, there was.
Thank you very much, and that's all you need to let them know, but hearing it from the school is important.
I agree.
So, thank you for that.
No problem, thank you.
Any questions for Peter? Okay, thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
All right, Dr. Clifford, where are you?
Okay, I just have a few things tonight. On April tenth, there was a progress report update to the joint school committees on benchmark data, and the next time we meet on May twenty-seventh, Peter will be presenting information on assessments that students have been taking this year, particularly math and reading. So, we'll do that on the twenty-seventh. The other piece is that the group that got together, it's been looking at math curriculum during the last several months, voted and came to a decision on HMA into math as the program that we're gonna go with next year. That's gonna be K through six, and also grade seven and eight also voted to go with HMA. So, that's a program we're gonna go with next year. We're working right now with the publisher to figure out professional development and get that, all of that information down and get that out to teachers, so that's an update on that, and that's really it. Those are the two big pieces that I have tonight.
Appreciate it. Any questions for Dr. Clifford? Dr. Group, where are you?
So, the only other item I have tonight is the good news that on Saturday, Kingston voted in support of the Silver Lake budget for FY twenty-six with no discussion and no debate, so it passed and was supported by the community.
Excellent. All right, is there any further business? Kate? Kate, are you running for reelection?
No.
I had heard. So, this is your last official meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to thank you for the time that you've put into being a part of this school committee. Your intelligence is unmatched in your professional background and the things that you brought to the table from day one were deeply appreciated. You know that the Playground Project is something I've been working on for years, and you helped us cross the finish line on that, and I'm indebted to you for that. You've always been someone we could count on to be at the meetings and to have an active ear and give good advice, so just like to thank you for your time on the committee. Before we leave, I do want to remind everyone that we have town meeting on May seventeenth, or May fourteenth at seven o'clock. That's May fourteenth at seven o'clock. We have town elections on May seventeenth, holiday long. Memorial Day will be observed on Monday, May twenty-sixth. Our next school committee meeting because of the holiday will be on Tuesday evening on the twenty-seventh. And on May thirtieth is the Silver Lake graduation with the rein date of May thirty-first. And Kate, I just want to remind you that as the, the only benefit of being on a school committee in Plimpton, Kingston, or Halifax, because we get paid so much, zero dollars, we did several years ago pass a policy in our district where you will be allowed to present the diplomas to your children upon graduation, you just need to contact the school principal when that time comes and let him or her know that you would like to participate, and you'll have that honor to be able to give your kids their diplomas.
And it's much more fun not to tell them.
Good tip.
And hang off, sit in the crowd and then come up at the end, it's, it makes for some great pictures.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session not to return to regular under MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations with the Plimpton Custodians, Coordinator Student Services, Administrative Assistant to the Principal, and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law in the approval of the executive session minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call. Kate?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you everyone for being here.